I'd like all the meeting to order. And by way of brief meeting introduction, this is, the session is being audio recorded just like every other P and Z meeting. Please be advised that today we are also recording a video as well. Commissioners and staff will generally remain on mute except when speaking or voting, and will keep video of themselves on throughout the meetings. During public hearings, all normal rules, including stating and spelling of your name, apply. Please use the chat feature and raise your hand to speak and you will be recognized. So this is a public meeting. Let me read the public notice into record. It's dated on December 18th, 2023. The Town of Kent Planning and Zoning Commission shall hold a public hearing via a Zoom meeting on Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024, beginning at 6:30 to discuss and possibly act on revisions to subdivisions, conservation development, family group childcare, and dwellings in incomplete subdivision regulations. Any corresponding documentation will be filed in the January 23rd public meeting folder, which can be found. Zoom meeting number is located at the official agenda and filed on the Town of Kent's website a minimum of 48 hours prior to the official Zoom meeting. Signed Wesley Warwick, Chairman. So, as you know, we've been working a great deal on these regulations. Spent quite a bit of time. We've gone through a public information meeting, and this is the final public meeting to review these regulations. So Glenn, at this point, could I turn it to you and have you do your report?
Absolutely. Thank you, Wes, and members of the commission. Been pleased to have an opportunity to work with the commission over the last year or so in terms of updates to land use regulations. I think I'm particularly pleased to do this because I think oftentimes regulations, many communities don't update or modify their regulations on a regular basis, and they can get out of sync with what's going on. So I thought this was a great opportunity to continue work with the Town of Kent on these regulations. Tonight is a public hearing on adoption for changes to the subdivision regulations and also to the zoning regulations overall. These updates to the regulation includes a comprehensive reorganization and revision of the subdivision regulations. And then with regard to the zoning regulations, as Wes indicated, we have revisions to the Conservation Development Regulation or section of the regulations, a new regulation on unfinished subdivisions, and then provisions related to family daycare home, I should say, family childcare home and group childcare home, which are required by the state of Connecticut. So the information has been posted on the town website. So people hopefully have had an opportunity to see and review the regulations. I'd like to talk first about the subdivision regulations overall. This is the larger application on the agenda this evening. Current subdivision regulations in Kent have not been reviewed or updated in some time. There are a number of different ways that the regulations started to fall out of compliance with statutory requirements and just, you know, best management practices that are in use in many municipalities today. So it was an opportunity to update the regulations, to address development issues that typically can arise as part of subdivisions, to come into better compliance with state law, and introduce best management practices. The regulations themselves contain four main parts, and this organization was intended to be user-friendly, to allow people to find quickly the provisions that they're most likely to be interested in as part of a subdivision application, and make the regulations easier to use. So the first major section is introduction and definitions, then the requirements of the regulations in terms of parcels and lots and road construction and stormwater drainage and other infrastructure elements, the procedures in terms of how an application will be processed, and then subdivisions, the process that would follow approval in terms of filing of maps, posting of financial guarantees, constructing the improvements, et cetera. In the first section of the regs, the introduction, the statutory authority and purposes for subdivision regulations, when the regulations apply, provision to waive or modify standards under certain situations, and then the definition of terms that are used in the regulations. The requirement section is probably the medias part of the regulations, and this section contains provisions related to the suitability of land, protecting important resources, requirements for laying out of lots, the open space requirements in terms of 15% minimum set aside. We've introduced a proportionality requirement so that the open space land is reflective of the characteristics of the parcel as a whole, and other provisions related to open space, and then also included provisions relative to solar access and erosion and sediment control. In terms of infrastructure, the provisions here, again, road design, driveways, ensuring that we have adequate sewage disposal and water supply for the lots to be created. The storm drainage section has been updated to reflect the current approach of what's called LID or Low Impact Development or Green Infrastructure, but it's a different approach to managing stormwater drainage that is included in the zoning regulations, and now the subdivision regulations will be in accordance with those regulations as well. The procedures section of the regulations, what's required for an application, how the application will be processed, statutory timeframes and guidelines, what happens after the approval in terms of map filing and a financial guarantee, which may or may not be provided by the subdivider, and then construction procedures in terms of preparing the land, inspection of improvements in the time period for completion. So that's an overview of the subdivision regulations. Again, it's a comprehensive reorganization, which is intended to update the provisions and be more user-friendly. The provisions related to the zoning regulations, there are three category of regulation changes being proposed for adoption tonight. The first of which relates to the Conservation Development Regulations. Conservation Development is a form of development which is more flexible and focuses on the unique qualities of the parcel to design a subdivision approach which is reflective of those unique qualities, and also to provide flexibility on how lots are laid out, provided the number of lots is not greater than somebody would get under a conventional approach, but it also results in 40 to 50% of the land being preserved as open space. So it's quite an advantageous approach for subdivision development in Kent. At the present time, Conservation Development is required in the RU1 district unless the commission finds for some reason that it's not the best approach for subdivision of land. And based on a recent regulation change in the last two or three years, it's allowed in the VR districts. But there were essentially two different approaches that were created, and so the regulations really weren't parallel and weren't consistent in terms of how they approached conservation development. So as part of our discussion with the commission, the goal was to merge these provisions together and create more consistency between these approaches. And the end result is a new regulation, Section 6700 of the zoning regulations, which is being considered for adoption tonight. The next section of proposed change to the zoning regulations actually relates to the subdivision regulations. There are some changes that were made in state law with regard to financial guarantees and other elements. But it opened up the possibility that somebody could subdivide a piece of property, sell a parcel of land to somebody who would build their own house, but that the timing of the house construction and the timing of the access, the road and the driveway, might be different. And there was a possibility that somebody might show up at town hall asking for a certificate of occupancy for their building, but that the access wasn't complete yet. So this regulation goes into the zoning regulations, and it says, "To help ensure that emergency services can be provided, that there has to be adequate access to either existing town road specifications, the base course of pavement, or it's determined by the fire marshal and the public works director to be safe and passable." And the same thing goes for the driveway. So this essentially requires that there be coordination between the parties, and any houses that do get built will have adequate access provided to them. And in fact, the town, if they wanted to, could perhaps even call the financial guarantee to have that road completed. And then the other regulation change is up, which is a childcare home and a family childcare home and a group childcare home. This regulation change was required by Public Act 23-142. It requires the regulations in all Connecticut municipalities be amended so that a family childcare home and a group childcare home located in a residence and licensed by the state are treated in the same manner as single-family or multifamily dwellings. So there has been a childcare crisis in the state in terms of establishing these, and the state decided that they wanted to facilitate people's ability to create these types of scenarios. These are what we might call micro daycare. A family childcare home is one to six children. In a group childcare home is seven to 12 children. And the Office of Early Childhood has a number of specifications and requirements for these. So the town's involvement essentially would be to grant a zoning permit on these particular applications, and that is what this regulation change is for. We add the definitions into the regulations about what a family childcare home and a group childcare home is. And this is different from a daycare center, which is 12 or more children in a more commercial type of operation. So we're going to allow this with adoption of the regulation as an accessory use to a residence for a family childcare home and a group childcare home, and then a principal use for a daycare center because that's a more substantial or significant facility. So that was residential zones, and then we're going to do the same thing in the business zones, that a childcare center would be permitted by special permit. And we've also added in a parking requirement, which we didn't have in the current regulations related to daycare centers. So those are the four applications which are before the commission tonight for consideration. Again, comprehensive reorganization and revisions to the subdivision regulations, and then the zoning regulation changes for conservation development, unfinished subdivisions, and group childcare home and family childcare home as well. So with that, I'll turn it, I'll turn it back to you, Wes, and for comment and input and feedback.
Terrific. Glenn, thank you so much. This is, this is an outstanding and very substantial work here. Regular effort has been done on this. And with that, being a public hearing, I would now look to the public for comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this? Yose.
Hi. Yeah, thank you for updating the regulations. Glad we have good subdivision regulations now. And the Conservation Development Regulations have also been approved. As you saw in my letter, I have two main comments still, and they regard both subdivision and conservation development regulations. So I'd like to start with the first one, which is the 25% or 15% slope. Like I explained, I think we should stay consistent with 25% instead of changing it to 15% in a couple of things for the reasons that I stated. So I don't know if you want to comment on that before we go on to the next one.
I think, Yose, why don't you get your comments out? Other people may have different thoughts, and then I think I can come back and, and address those for the commission's consideration, if that's okay with you.
Great, sure. So the second one regards the open space set aside. So that's again about of the regulations. And I didn't realize at first that the 20% affordable housing in a subdivision by state statute requires the open space restrictions to be dropped. But it strikes me very strange that that would be the case also in a conservation development because it wouldn't be a conservation development anymore. It would just be a cluster development. So in, that's, that's very different from a conservation development. And the other the other affordable housing things that were added, now we have multiple of these. And I am still in favor of just keeping adding a bonus or density bonus if you do it outside the conservation area. Because again, if you do it inside, if you use part of the conservation area for affordable housing, then it becomes less and less of a conservation area and also not a conservation development. So that's a problem I have with that.
Yose, if I may, I just, I want to thank you here as part of the public hearing process for your continued involvement in regulation updates and your careful review and reading of the regulations. You've helped us improve the regulations through this process. So again, thank you for your research, investigation, and comments. I very much appreciate it.
Indeed. Thank you. Yes. So why don't we, if there's any others that would like to speak, and then Glenn will go back and address those issues after public comment.
Certainly.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to do address?
Connie has had her hand up.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Connie had her hand up, and then Justin after her.
Okay, great, great.
Hi, Connie Manis. Here on behalf of the Kent Conservation Commission. So some of my comments are related to the comments you just heard from Yose. I think some of you, at least on this meeting, know that I am, I do consider myself an advocate for affordable housing. I served on the Town of Kent Subcommittee creating the Affordable Housing Plan. I'm involved with a regional advisory committee that centers around communications about affordable housing, and I'm heading a regional grant funded project that involves eight Northwest Connecticut towns collaborating with housing organizations to help to address some of the needs that we find regionally. I'm personally impacted by the housing shortage. I have an adult child who lives in a, shares a bedroom with a 15-year-old, sleeps in a bunk bed. So, you know, I am testimony to the fact that it is very difficult to find, you know, affordable rentals for young people who want to live in our town. I submitted comments, or the Conservation Commission submitted comments because affordable housing and conservation are frequently pitted against each other and presented as an either or choice, but they really are both related to significant public benefits that all people deserve, and they shouldn't supplant one, each other. So I'm just going to read my public, my letter in case you haven't all had a chance to read it through. It says, "On behalf of the Kent Conservation Commission, please accept this letter regarding the above referenced regulation, that one being the proposed Conservation Development Zoning Regulation. We support zoning regulations that are protective of natural resources and provide for residential quality of life through the mindful provision of open space in Kent. These include zoning regulations providing for reservation of open space as delineated, delineated in the proposed subdivision regulations, Section 3B and 3D, and the proposed Conservation Development Regulation, which provides an incentive to protect natural resources by allowing greater density of development in a proportion of a property in exchange for restricting from development land of high conservation value. We support the proposed Conservation Development Regulation with the exception of paragraphs 3 and 4 of Section 6730, which allow the Planning and Zoning Commission to reduce by an unquantified amount, potentially even to eliminate conserved space in exchange for the inclusion of affordable housing within a subdivision. We do not deny that there's a lack of affordable housing in Kent and generally support incentives that increase the likelihood that such housing will be developed, including the provision in the proposed Conservation Development Regulation, allowing a proportionate density bonus for conservation developments that include a percentage of affordable housing. However, a Conservation Development Regulation which compromises its purposes by chipping away at open space requirements, which can be used in such a way that results in development with no conservation at all, is not fulfilling its conservation purpose. Conservation developments do not merely serve nature. They provide high-quality residential living proximate to buffering open space, wildlife, and outdoor recreation, benefits that all people should enjoy. An incentive for the development affordable housing of affordable housing which decreases open space requirements serves neither conservation nor residents of the resultant affordable housing who lose out on natural land buffers and places to be outside. The Conservation Development Regulation as proposed creates unnecessary compromise to social equity and instigates conflict, sacrificing future residents' access to open space and pitting conservation against development when these two public benefits should be complementary. Please consider revising the proposed Conservation Development Regulation by removing 67.3 and 67.30.4. Please continue to provide zoning that incentivizes the development of affordable housing within Kent's regulations, such as through density bonuses, without compromising the purpose of conservation developments. We hope these comments are helpful, and thank you for your work and the opportunity to contribute our observations sincerely."
Connie, that was extremely thoughtful, and thank you very much for that. I can see that it was a real dilemma for you to write that between the two. So that was very well done. And Justin, did Justin have his hand up?
Yes, my hand is up. Justin Potterm, President of Kent and Affordable Housing. So first, the latest data from Kent shows there are 128 households here in Kent paying more than 50% of their income on housing. That includes 78 owner households who are paying 50% or more of their income on housing. For Kent Affordable Housing, we have 64 households on our waiting list. And in most years, only, only one unit becomes available for, becomes available for a new occupant. So it's fantastic that the, the commission has included 6730, paragraphs 3 and 4. It's great to see that, as well as the, the density bonuses for the village residential area. So right now, we're in the process of trying to seek a parcel to develop for affordable housing. The Department of Housing has money available to build single-family homes throughout the Litchfield County area. And the paragraph 4 of Session 6300 would, you know, theoretically provide us with, you know, such lots to develop. So this is sort of a circumstance where there is an explicit trade-off between, between conservation and affordable housing. You know, here we have these, these regulations that are proposed to explicitly address this, this great need for affordable housing that Kent has. And, you know, the commission's being asked to pair those back and eliminate those, those provisions. And, you know, I think some key words in those paragraphs in both cases is "the commission may." So there are, you know, depending on the circumstances, there may be situations where, you know, a few affordable housing units could be accommodated on a parcel, and there are surely circumstances where there shouldn't be any affordable housing units accommodated on a parcel. You know, the provisions as written give the commission the discretion that it should have to, to adjust the amount of affordable housing that could be included. You know, and frankly, you know, the, these provisions, you know, they do not provide an incentive for a developer to, to include these, include affordable housing. It largely, you know, it'd be a civic-minded developer who sees the great need for affordable housing that Kent has might decide to, to give us a, give Kent Affordable Housing a parcel on which to develop an affordable home. You know, and I think the, the commission should be applauded for, for thinking about that and making, making that possible. Sort of an issue that came up with the, the North Main development. So thank you for including this, and I very much hope that, that these provisions stay in there.
Thank you, Justin.
So taking off my affordable housing hat, putting on my, my conservationist hat here for a second. 6730, Section 2. So the proportionality thing, so the, the first paragraph suggests that the, the, the open space parcel be consolidated. But then Section 2 sort of said that there should be a sort of piecemeal approach to, you know, a little bit of, you know, this, a little bit of that, et cetera, which seems to be so conflict between the two. I think any sort of conservation biologist would say that, you know, what, what matters above all else is the, the parcel being contiguous. So.
Okay, Justin, does that, does that complete your, your comments?
That's all for now. Thank you.
Terrific, terrific. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard?
I would, Wes.
That voice sounds familiar.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody. So I jumped on late, and I am surmising that you are in the Conservation Development. And I wonder, can I make comments now to pages before where, where Justin was commenting? Is this still appropriate?
Absolutely.
Okay. Then I would start on page 4, and I would suggest in 6732 that that 15% or more in the second line be modified to 25%. No place in the regulations has, is the 15%. 25 is pervasive throughout the, the regulation.
Right. We, we've gone through that in a, in a, in a previous comment, yeah.
Okay, great. And then 6734, the, if the developer transfers buildable land approved for building purposes, one lot or site, is that? or site, is that is that limited to one lot? Um, or is there um is is there the thinking that that all of the conservation could be um traded for affordable housing?
I I think the way this is crafted right now, Matt, it says one lot or site.
Okay.
So I think the there's two different approaches here, which I think uh both Connie and uh Justin kind of spoke to. Um, and uh sixty seven thirty uh four, which is the one that you were talking about is really a situation where a piece of land will get deeded uh uh with commission approval to Kent Affordable Housing or another nonprofit housing organization. And they would be responsible for building the house. So it is a a donation of buildable property that they could, again with grants from the Department of Housing and others um under undertake that approach. Um, sixty seven thirty point three is a little bit different. Um, and this is really a situation that the developer would build the house and that would be subject to deed restrictions. Um, and in this case, it's a forty-year term with automatic renewals after that. Um, and so this would be a scenario where again um land would be set aside in that situation. And I think the idea here was again, it 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 is a may. Uh, it allows the commission to consider uh this scenario. Um, if somebody proposed an affordable housing application with more than twenty percent of the units under state law and and it's a subdivision, they're they're not required to have any open space. Um, so they wouldn't, and if they did more than thirty percent, they wouldn't have to comply with the town regulations at all. So I think what we're trying to do is find a of an opportunity here to address these situations. Um, but I think there are some good comments raised here and uh while sixty seven thirty point four has a one lot provision, it's uh possible that sixty seven thirty point three could have a limit on this um in terms of the amount of land uh that uh, you know, could be used for this purpose. We our base open space requirement in subdivision is fifteen percent. So an open space subdivision is either forty or fifty percent. So this kind of rounding it up, it's roughly triple the amount of open space we might otherwise get as part of a conventional subdivision. And that's why the commission decided to make it the preferred option in the rural district. So I think in this situation, we could put a lot limit or an acreage limit or a percentage limit on the amount of land that that uh could be used in this way. Um, and so I think that's something for the commission to consider.
Thanks for that, Glenn. Um, and then the 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 last couple of comments I have um are on page five and it goes back to a discussion that we had been having um in the fall um with regard to sixty seven forty one A, the first bullet point, where we talk about uh reducing the gross area of the parcel by twenty five percent, fifteen percent due to the open space set-aside requirement. Um, that old that fifteen percent seems to be a to a a a hold on from the subdivision regulations and um I would lobby that that fifteen percent doesn't belong. In the same way, I would lobby that um sixty seven forty two C, um which is the soil-based approach, um, the the multiplication by eighty five, by point eight five to get to a fifteen percent open space set-aside doesn't really belong here either because we're already asking for additional, we're already asking for forty and fifty percent open space. And I know this is just, this is just the the calculation for how many, how many lots could be approved. But I think it's, I think it's limiting. And that's it. Thank you.
So Glenn, did you uh take all of what Matt had to say in?
I I think I did.
Yeah.
Um, I think Justin's got his hand up as well. I I do have some comments uh from Yose's original uh input, et cetera, so.
So do you want to start with with your report and uh and and we'll we'll approach it that way? Because you had organized this to to a lot of the uh comments.
Uh, Justin had his hand up. Justin, is it okay if I start responding to comments and then? Or do you want to?
It's it's a brief interjection. You know, just to just to put an exclamation point on the usefulness of uh six, seven, thirty um point four. So if just yesterday, I I gave up Kent Affordable Housing spot in this funding round for the Department of Housing for a a lot that um you know, because we were unable to 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 find a lot and um and the Director of the Litchfield County Center of Housing Opportunity turned to another group elsewhere who had two lots available and ready, you know. And now that it's been clarified that, okay, this is only only one lot that that would would be be made available, I think any um concerns about the the entire open space being, fifty percent of the open space being turned into affordable housing have been been alleviated. Um, so I'm sort of very excited about the inclusion of uh six, seven, three, zero uh point four in particular.
If if I may, Wes, can I uh let me respond to comments. I think my purpose here is to um address these issues for the record so the commission can can make decisions or choices on on how they would like to proceed. Um, I think it was pointed out by Yose and by Matt. Um, we do have provisions in the regulations that um we're establishing a proportionality requirement. The proportionality requirement uh requires that open space to be deeded to meet the requirements of the regulations has to be configured the same as the parcel as a whole with regard to wetlands, watercourses, steep slopes and floodplains. So you just can't give all of the encumbered land for the open space. It also has to include buildable land to create sort of a diverse open space uh set-aside requirement. Um, when Kent originally adopted soil-based zoning, the soil categories that were selected were twenty five percent or greater slopes. In terms of our cons uh discussion about the uh open space proportionality factor, um, the issue of fifteen percent came up. This does not affect the number of lots in the subdivision. This does not affect the uh amount of open space that's going to be set aside. But what it does do is establish the proportionality factor so that the lands are uh functionally similar in their configuration. So it this choice of percent of land is really a choice for the commission to to make here in terms of what number they would like to use. The fifteen percent slope, which is what the commission decided to go to public hearing with, isn't reflected in other parts of the regulations. We generally have in by the regulations, I mean, the zoning regulations and the subdivision regulations. We typically have relied on the twenty five percent number. So for uh consistency and simplicity for people's thinking about this, um twenty five percent is uh the number which is more commonly used in the regulations. Um, if the commission uh desires, they could include the fifteen percent number. Um, and it's not going to necessarily change the amount of open space, but it may change the configuration of the open space. I think uh Yose had a comment too in terms of uh that uh the affordable housing requirement of twenty percent um under state law means that um any subdivision that provides twenty percent affordable housing is exempt from any open space requirements. Yose's comment was that uh, well, if it was a condominium-type development or a common interest community, um, that what would happen in that situation or or scenario? Um, and I I think the issue here in terms of conservation is that we're requiring that there be an open space set-aside of forty or fifty percent of the parcel. Um, and the open space, I think based on Connie's comment um as well, could be a slight reduction of the open space, maybe from fifty percent to forty five percent or forty percent to thirty five percent or some other type of configuration, um, which is still double or triple what we're already requiring for open space as part of a conventional subdivision. Um, and so there might be a way for us to to have an approach which does um not create a conflict uh between these two, um but produces a harmonious outcome with double or triple the amount of open space we might normally get. I think uh Yose's other comment was that he thought that an open space bonus uh could be uh the approach to go here, that in addition to the number of lots which are approved uh in the mathematics on this, um that there could be one or two additional lots granted for an affordable unit. Um, and it wouldn't affect the open space at all. I think that's another option for the commission to consider. I think uh Connie's comments, Connie mentioned the concept of removing sixty seven thirty point three and sixty seven thirty point four. Um, and I think I'd urge the commission perhaps to consider if there's some way that that these concepts could be blended so that we we don't remove the open space uh provision where the open space land um could be uh or, excuse me, the affordable housing set-aside could count towards the open space, but I think put limits on it so that it's a very modest uh type of limitation. Um, is something the commission may want to discuss. Uh, Justin's comments, um, I think there's no doubt that there's a significantly need in all Connecticut municipalities for affordable housing. Um, I think the regulation was set up for the commission to have the may language in there. Um, you don't have to do this. It's up to the commission to decide in a certain situation that this is not a uh scenario or trade that that you might consider. Um, but again, there might be ways to do this with uh some limitations on it. I think in terms of Matt's comments, um, he suggested again the slope be fifteen percent, not twenty five percent, which is the same comment as Yose had. Um, he asked the question about sixty seven thirty point four and whether there's a limitation on one lot. I think the answer there is is yes. Um, and then Matt's other comment had to do with section sixty seven forty. And these are the provisions that relate to how many lots a developer might have as part of a conservation development, either in the village or in the rural district. What we created here in sixty seven forty was the mathematics to go through to determine the number of lots. It wasn't our thought process as the regulation was created that there was going to be a benefit one way or the other in terms of the development approach. Uh, there wasn't a bonus for doing a conservation development, um as in you would get more units. It's roughly the same number of units as you would get as part of a conventional subdivision, but you're going to generate quite a bit of efficiency and infrastructure cost savings and other things by a more flexible approach. And the town's going to get forty to fifty percent open space as as part of that approach. So the reason the math contains, as as Matt pointed out, the fifteen percent reduction for open space or the eighty five percent factor uh to reflect open space is because our base standard for open space preservation in the subdivision is in fact fifteen percent. So if if we didn't take that out, a developer is able to count that land for the number of lots that they would get. And again, our original approach on this particular uh regulatory um concept um had been to be neutral in terms of the number of units that might result, but to grant flexibility in the layout of those units um for uh forty percent or fifty percent of the parcel to be preserved as as open space in perpetuity. So uh if that fifteen percent number was removed, uh and the commission can certainly direct that to happen, um, the end result would likely be an increase in the number of units that are possible um as part of a conservation development approach versus what somebody might receive in a in a sort of a conventional subdivision approach. So I think I've tried to cover the comments and give the commission some feedback. Um, so I uh welcome any other thoughts or comments that people may have. I think Connie had her had her hand up earlier unless, yeah.
All right, so so obviously, um, after the public hearing, we have um uh a lot to consider here. But if there is no further comments or to be shared, then um um I I suggest that we get to that.
If I may, Wes, just for the commission, I'd like to put something up here on the screen. Um, Yose was kind enough to submit his comments uh in a dense meeting. Um, and I had an opportunity uh to, that is the wrong. Yes, I'm sorry, I I apologize. It'll take me a minute to find that file, but um Yose submitted some other comments and I had provided for the record a memo uh that um addresses his comments. Um, there are a number of things that suggest, for example, the issue of the fifteen to twenty five percent open space set-aside. Um, I've identified those as for the commission to discuss. Um, and I think with regard to other comments that Yose had made, uh some of them were very helpful, uh, you know, in terms of um observations about a table of contents in the subdivision regulations, um, some inconsistencies with regard to conservation biologists, et cetera. Um, and I've identified those in that uh material for the commission uh and suggest that that change be made. So I think uh I see Justin has his hand up again.
Yes, sorry, I made my environmentalist slash conservationist hat on again. Um, I also run the boards of some um environmental organizations. Um, so I'll give my my last pitch regarding six, seven, three, zero point two, the proportionality on the requirement. Um, why not, instead of doing proportionality, why why not um use language such as, you know, the area to be preserved shall be that with the highest conservation value or or something along along those lines. Uh, because, you know, it's a a conservation development ostensibly should be trying to conserve the the areas of of highest conservation value, I would think. And sort of putting out this this list of of various sort of land features and saying you need a bit of that, you need a bit of this, you need a bit of that. It just seems counterproductive to the spirit of a conservation development and and what we theoretically are trying to do here. So that's my last comment on that proportionality.
Oh, now I'm going to try to tease something else out of you, Justin. I I think in the configuration of open space, I think that uh over the years, history has shown that the Conservation Commission um and the Land Trust and others have done a tremendous job in Kent working to preserve the overall landscapes. And there can be scenarios where um uncertain parcels, there are are very sensitive uh natural resource uh and other features to be preserved. And there may be other areas where there's an intention to create a greenway connection between parcels and that may not have quote conservation value in the strictest sense, um but it may make a meaningful uh contribution to an overall open space system. So I think what I tried to do, Justin, was the help the commission here by crafting a regulation that would take input from the Land Trust, from the Conservation Commission, from um professionals um to evaluate what is the best open space configuration on a parcel. Um, we have given the developer the tools to create uh a resource plan for the site so that they would justify to the commission why they've proposed the open space configuration they did. Um, and the commission can modify that as part of their review and approach. And there's a provision in the regulation says if the analysis, if the commission is not satisfied with the analysis done by the engineer, architect or conservation biologist, they can have it their own analysis done at the applicant's expense. So I think what we tried to do is create a dialogue here that would result in the best sort of trade-offs as part of what the open space could or should be. Um, because really sort of every parcel's different. So I I think that was the way I tried to craft the regulation that it's it's a organic type of approach based on the attributes of a particular parcel.
All right, uh, are Are there any further comments from the public? So hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, signify by raising your hand? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing. Ty, right, and we'll move into deliberation on this.
That's right.
Okay, so public hearing is closed at seven twenty-three P M. All right. So Glenn, at this point, would you like to go through your report? And let's talk, there's, there's two major items, as I can see. One is the fifteen percent versus twenty-five percent steep slopes. And then the the issue of what Connie and Justin had reviewed on on affordable housing.
I think if I could, Wes, I think it might make sense for us to keep the thoughts separate, if you will. So let's, let's talk through the subdivision regulations first. The the main comment we've received on the subdivision regulations is the comment in the open space section with regard to the proportionality factor and whether the number should be fifteen percent slopes or twenty-five percent slopes. And I think that's really the only comment on the subdivision regulations. So if we can discuss that, the commission could come to a consensus on the subdivision regulations. If you're, if you're ready to vote on that, we could then do that and then move on to the zoning regulations. That might be a good way to proceed.
Right. Well, I think that that is an important point. I have always in subdivision planning considered fifteen percent as truly in a mountainous area as in Kent as really not steep slopes. And I personally do concur that that we should not change that percentage. So I think probably the best way to do it is to, is to, is to go through and we'll hear from the commissioners and then take a vote and proceed that way. All right. So you heard, that was my comment, that I don't see, as Glenn sees, that we should change to a lower percentage of land, because quite frankly, in the rural zone, most of land is fifteen percent. Sarah?
I just ask a question of Glenn. When it comes to fifteen percent versus twenty-five percent, is that just sort of a difference between aesthetics? Or is it more of a consideration of site suitability?
I think the historic discussion focus on slopes has really been with regard to site suitability. I think as Yose pointed out in his comments originally, when the original soil survey was done back in the fifties and sixties, that the soil categorization that they used was generally speaking, zero to three percent slopes. And three percent is three feet of rise in a hundred foot distance. So that's pretty, that's pretty flat. The next category was three to eight percent. Eight percent is often the steepest that you would want to have for a major collector road or a state highway. They would try to avoid slopes that are that are steeper than that because of volume of traffic and traffic safety. The next category is eight to fifteen percent. Oftentimes, we find that in many regulations, there's a limitation on driveway slope shall not exceed fifteen percent. That's, that's a pretty good, pretty good slope. And then fifteen to twenty-five is really now where you're getting into a situation that does present construction challenges. If you were to try to put a road across a twenty-five percent slope, you're not even trying to go up or down it. When you put a roadway in at a fifty foot wide right away, which is flat, and then grade up and down, you are chasing that grade for perhaps a hundred feet on each side. Major cut through the landscape. So for most municipalities, it's the road planning which has been, where slopes have been most effective. I think as Yose pointed out in his comment, that twenty-five percent slope is twenty-five feet in a hundred feet. So if you think about it as a house, if the house is forty foot deep, you know, front to back on the house, and we have a change of grade of ten feet from the front to the back, it's a walkout basement. So it doesn't sound like very much, and it's, it's possible that that could, could work. On the other hand, if we have a twenty-five percent slope that goes for hundreds of feet, it can be a challenge to get a driveway in for fire trucks and other things like that to provide services to the site. So it's a blend of different factors that go into this. You might think of Frank Lloyd Wright's house Falling Water, which is a very difficult site and challenge, and they made it work, but those are, those are unique.
With, with Falling Water as an example here, and I, I know, I'm not a site planner, so I'm only speaking with very limited resources here, but it would seem then, from what you're saying, that potentially twenty-five percent would be preferable in an environmentally sensitive area. So would it be, would it behoove us to write in something that says fifteen percent, except in consideration of an environmentally sensitive area where the slope may be adjusted to twenty-five percent, something along those lines?
I don't think I would, Sarah. I mean, I think that my sense of a fair regulation for the commission is to lay out what the standard will be for a developer to comply with. And those are the standards that we're going to use. So having a standard which is subject to modification through the application process after somebody's perhaps spent tens of thousands of dollars preparing an application wouldn't be something I think which is, which is useful. I think my thought on this is that the the amount of open space in a subdivision is set by the regulations themselves. It's either fifteen percent in a subdivision or forty or fifty percent in a conservation subdivision. Now, all we're talking about is the proportionality factor, how we're going to balance this so that the open space is reflective of the parcel as a whole. I don't know that it's going to make a meaningful difference by having a number fifteen percent versus twenty-five percent. It's just going to, again, reflect the composition of the parcel. So I think that it's, it's, it's not a major ecologic issue. I think the issue is that, to me, it's more, again, trying to find a standard used in the regulations, which is really part of what an engineer and others already do to provide for this ratio and the proportionality factor. So mostly just on the basis of user friendliness and consistency, I would lean towards the twenty-five. But I just want the commission to understand it's, it's a very, it's a very slight lean. It could be whichever number the commission is most comfortable with.
Alice?
Well, since it was my one first and only real concern is I strongly believe it should be twenty-five percent in light of the proportionality concept. It is twenty, I put twenty-five percent slope in the same category. I might put, you know, a stone that takes up, you know, an acre of land, and it is an unbuildable concept. I know it's buildable, but it's basically unbuildable. It's the fire and we talk about this a lot, just in people's homes and getting a permit for a driveway. And the slope, I am strongly of the mind, it should be twenty-five percent on the proportionality factor. And it's just where I am on it. And I okay, that's, I'm, I'm the adder.
Okay, thank you. So Daryl, where do you land on this?
Well, I agree that, you know, this steeper slope is certainly fine when you're pouring foundations and dealing with grade, with retaining structures. And, and, you know, a facade that has a walkout exposure. Glenn's comments about the driveway grading, you know, do give me pause about getting to that house and what it takes to, to get to a steeper slope. So you know, I like to be consistent within the regulations, but that, that driveway construction does give me some pause. So still deliberating.
Well, that's not, again, this is an equation for proportionality, not as because you could not put a driveway on twenty-five percent.
Correct.
At least over a short, over a long period, over a long distance.
Proportionality is all about what's buildable and what's not buildable. Basically, and you've basically said twenty-five percent.
Nearly fifteen percent is built.
I know, and twenty-five is not. That's what I mean.
So Karen, how about you?
I'm sort of feeling like Daryl is. I'm kind of still deliberating it in my own mind, but I would say that my instincts are leaning more towards the twenty-five percent. I just think that's a better way to proportion a property and would be our best bet to do and keep it consistent throughout the regulation.
So Sarah, I think you spoke on this, right?
Yeah, I, I'm based upon the conversation here and just sort of what I'm reading and, and hearing the comments from others, leaning towards the twenty-five percent.
Shelby?
I think I am as well, particularly given, I think, as maybe Glenn has indicated, the general terrain in Kent, twenty-five percent seems to make more sense to me.
Larry?
You're muted.
Are you muted? Larry, you're muted.
There you go.
I also agree with the twenty-five percent. I'm just curious about the economics of it. I mean, if somebody comes in and is selling lots for a hundred thousand dollars and some other, someone else is selling lots for, you know, a million dollars, you know, what, what can they do? I mean, it might be a little easier for the, for the higher priced lots, that's all.
Okay, Anne Anne?
I think I'm with the majority in leaning towards the twenty-five percent.
Okay. All right. So we've heard it. I'm, I'm, as I had said, I'm with Glenn. We don't want to make subdivision regulations an impossible situation in Kent. I mean, we're not, we're not here to deter development, but, but to approach it in a sensible fashion. So Glenn, I'm, I'm hearing from the majority that we should keep the twenty-five percent.
I understand your direction. I can make that happen. I think if the commission is ready to move into the territory of making motions, it might make sense for the record for Donna Ty to keep tabs on what's going on that the subdivision regulations as submitted, the modification would be to, on the proportionality factor, change the proportionality factor from fifteen percent to twenty-five percent. Yose made two other comments, one of which is to adjust the table of contents to correct the references to the appendices. That change is something I would recommend for your consideration. The other comment had to do with the twenty percent affordable housing provision. And there's no change recommended there. So I think if the commission is comfortable making a motion, it would be to approve the regulations.
As they are. So, so right now, we're, we are at twenty-five percent.
The current draft of the regulations, which is in the record and is before you this evening, has the proportionality slope at fifteen percent.
What does?
That we decided to go to public hearing with the fifteen percent. And then, again, based on public comment, the commission's consensus appears to go to twenty-five percent. So we would go ahead and that is a change from the material in the record. So that would be a condition, if you will, of your action to change it to twenty-five, and we're good to go.
Well, why don't we vote on that separately? And then we can do the others, because I don't think there's any opposition to that. All right. Would somebody like to make a motion to change our regulations for a, from fifteen percent in the proportionality equation to twenty-five percent? Alice, I think you're the
I'm the loudest mouth.
You are indeed.
Let's see, if I say this right, I make a motion that we change the proposed regulation from fifteen percent to twenty-five percent of the port, oh, I'm not saying it right.
Proportionality factor.
Factor for conservation development.
No subdivision regulations.
I mean subdivision, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I second the motion.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. All right. So let's, no need to discuss this anymore. Let's show show of hands, all in favor for that resolution. Signify by raising your hand. So we have Daryl, Karen, Sarah, Alice, Anne, we can elevate you. Okay? And Larry? All right. So, so I am the single naysayer. I'm worried about the unintended consequence of it. So we'll change the language to twenty-five percent, Glenn.
Got it. I think if the commission is so inclined, if you wanted to make a motion for adoption of the subdivision regulations as modified by that vote, I will clean up the table of contents. It's not really a policy matter. It's a
Right.
presentation, et cetera. I think I spoke with Ty today and we believe that the moratorium expires on February one. So we would like to propose for your consideration an effective date, if the commission is so inclined, of January thirty-first. So that as the moratorium expires, the new regulations will be in effect for any subdivisions going forward.
Great. An inch is good as a mile, isn't it, Glenn?
There you go. Or a minute is as good as a year, whatever.
Perfect. Would somebody like to propose that? As a motion? That we accept the subdivision regulations as modified by that last vote?
I motion that we accept the subdivision regulations as modified by the last vote on the fifteen to twenty-five percent and that we proceed with January thirty-first as the commencement date.
Second.
Thanks, Larry. All right. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, signify by raising your hand? All right. It looks like it's unanimous. Motion carries. Okay, so Glenn, what's, yeah?
I think there's perhaps two easy ones, and then we'll circle back to the Yeah, I think there's there's perhaps two easy ones, and then we'll circle back to the conservation subdivision. Next one for the commission's consideration would be the zoning regulation change related to incomplete subdivisions. And again, this is the requirement which says that no CO is going to get issued for a house that does not have appropriate access to the satisfaction of the Public Works Director and the Fire Marshal. So it's either a town road or it's, you know, the base course of pavement is down or it's fully graded, accessible, etc. And again, it's just to avoid a scenario where a house is built in public services or particularly emergency services couldn't be provided.
I think it was a good catch that we've got this now covered. That obviously was a potential loophole. So I I have no comment on that. I think it's a it's a good regulation.
Perhaps just for clarity on the record, this doesn't impact houses or roads that preexist this, correct?
No, it only relates to a new subdivision and for scenario where there's an incomplete road. That there is no access to it. That's when it would trigger.
A question. So does the commission need to review the contracts between the developer and the homeowner?
No. I I think it's it's a case. Yeah, it's up to them. I think that I'm sure that in a scenario like this competent counsel would be involved on both sides. The issue is the regulations are, well, okay, I think regulations are going to clearly state that no CO is going to be issued until there's adequate access. So if, for whatever reason, a developer should not uphold their end of the bargain upon sale of the lot, state statutes require that prior to sale of the lot, either the improvements are completed, in which case this regulation doesn't matter because the improvements will be done, or a financial guarantee has to be posted to guarantee those improvements. This regulation is built and suspenders on top of that and says, we're not giving a CO until the road is done. And should there be a situation that the developers headed off to South America or something else like that? The town has the financial guarantee and then could call the bond to make the homeowner or homeowners whole in terms of having access to their parcel. So it just avoids a situation where there's no consideration of this. It puts the town back in the driver's seat.
But on Sarah's comment, it only applies to subdivisions after January 31, 2024.
It will, this would go into the zoning regulations. And yes, it would have to be a scenario. I'm not aware of any unfinished subdivisions in Kent at the present time. If there happened to be a lot out there that did not have adequate access and somebody's in the process of building a house, this could apply. But it sounds a little bit like a unicorn type of set of facts, if you will. So I think, again, we would have a financial guarantee in that scenario to address that situation.
All right, so do I hear a motion to accept the unfinished subdivision portion of the regulation?
Wes, I'll make the motion to approve the proposed zoning regulation regarding incomplete subdivisions, if that's well enough said.
Yep.
Second.
Thanks, Darrell. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think we we need an effective date on this one as well.
Well, yes.
But I think the scenario that we have here, we set the effective date for the subdivision regulations so that when the moratorium ended, we don't have that same situation here. That there's there's nothing urgent, so the commission could say that the effective date of this is, I'm just looking here at the calendar. Ty, do you have any suggestions here?
February 10?
Sure.
Is there a reason for the 10th, Ty?
Well, there's a 15 day appeal period. I have to get it noticed in the paper and, you know, distributed to the clerk's office. Glenn has to give the final copy, so that allows enough time for all of that to be in place.
Ty, that's a very good reason.
So you want to amend the motion in the second to include that? I think that would be excellent.
Be great.
I'll amend my motion to include the effective date of February 10, 2024.
Excellent.
I second the amended motion.
Okay, all right. All right, so Ty, are we ready to vote, do you think? Okay, all in favor? All right, the motion is carried. Okay, so we've got the group and family home daycare zoning regulations.
Yep. So I don't think there were any comments on this regulation as well. Again, Public Act 23-142 required municipalities do this. Actually, the requirement was for municipalities to have done this by December. We were in the middle of working on the regulations and we just put it into the hopper with the other ones, which is why it's here now. So we're a little bit late, if you will, but there's no penalties for us not having done this. And so I think it's in with the other regulation changes. So if the commission's comfortable, I think we could move ahead with this regulation and the effective date. I think Ty, February 10 would be a good one. Yeah.
Yes, please.
Yep. All right, Karen, when you're on a roll, would you like to make that motion? To accept?
So moved. How's that?
That's good. Darrell?
Second.
All right. All right, so all in favor of accepting the group and family home daycare regulations into the amendment? Did did you say the the date, effective date? Karen?
Yep.
Motion?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Motion carried. Okay. So finally, then, the conservation development zoning regulations.
I think there's a couple of issues here in my report to the commission dated January 16. There's a couple of things in terms I've suggested for making changes. These were pointed out by Yost's some internal references and other things that should be updated for consistency. Again, thank you very much for those, and those are identified in the report as make change. Yost had made a comment about affordable housing. We'll talk about that a little bit later. And also, the same comment was raised here with regard to the land slope. And I think if the commission wishes to proceed in a parallel manner to the subdivision regulations, we would agree to modify the conservation development regulations and the proportionality factor to include the 25%.
Insistency is golden.
There we go. So then I think that the other issues before the commission relate to, let's go back to my notes, make sure 6730, subparts three and four. And possible modifications to that language. I can bring that up on the screen if that's helpful to the commission. So 6733 says buy special permit. So it's an application before the commission for a special permit to reduce the open space required and modify the proportionality factor as a result of affordable housing, provided it meets these situations. I think one of the concerns expressed was that we have the limitation down below on one lot or site, but we don't have any limitation in here. The fact that it says the commission may buy special permit gives the commission some control or discretion. But we could also put a limit on that and say, you know, reduce the open space by no more than 5%. So instead of 50%, it'd be 45 or no more than 45. But the commission does have some discretion to address this issue. And I think here, again, it's provision of one lot or site. It may be considered by the commission as a credit toward the open space dedication requirements. And if the commission wanted, we can modify for to make this a special permit as well.
Well, isn't it not as necessarily a special permit?
It's not stated that way here, Wes. So I think we could change it to make this a special permit. Again, in other words, it's not just a straightforward, automatic. I think the commission is very sensitive to the desire for open space and the need for affordable housing, and they would consider this as part of an application and try to find a way to accomplish both objectives.
Right. If that's inconsistent, Glenn, I think we should include that then.
Yep.
Glenn, can I ask sort of a philosophical question for us to consider as the commission and just in the review of this?
Certainly.
In the language, are we adequately providing incentives or mechanisms to encourage landowners to contribute either to the conservation efforts of the town and also the affordable housing efforts of the town too? So is is there sort of equity here on both sides for for equal contributions of land? And the encouragement?
I think it might have been Justin who raised the comment earlier that I think this requires a property owner developer who's who's inclined towards helping on the affordable housing issue. It it might be simplest, if you will, for an applicant to simply just proceed with, you know, a dedication either to the town or the land trust or some other nonprofit, one one entity, one transfer, and they're on their way. There's no requirement or obligation in here in this section 6730 for affordable housing. So it it would require some desire on the part of a subdivider to address this situation in a positive way.
And with with that statement in mind, then do we have any way of understanding based upon this how the open space will be maintained over time?
I think it's the same way that it's done today. So historically, the Kent Land Trust has done a pretty awesome job in terms of managing open space. Certainly, they're familiar with the circumstances or situations. As part of the changes to the regulations, we've also added in the opportunity that land could be offered to the town. The town doesn't have as much experience or track record in terms of maintaining open space, but you know, the land's been sort of unmaintained in an undeveloped state for centuries. So there may not be a lot of needs in in that scenario. But I I think that we do have an opportunity here to you know, try to set up an approach that would address that.
Glenn, do we also have the the ability for a homeowners association to 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 maintain that open space?
Yes, we do. We set up the regulations. Certainly, I'm notes in the subdivision regulations. I think that the suggested order of discussion and consideration was town first in case there are needs for either town park land or other type of municipal activity or improvement. I think that realistically, they may step up in that type of situation, but otherwise they might demure, and then the land trust or a nonprofit land conservation organization, I think, is the next tier. Then it goes to the homeowners association as being the third option, mostly because the homeowners association may not allow for public access the same way that the land trust or the municipality might.
Right, that's a good comment.
And may I ask a follow up to that too? That's builds on it, but do we need to take a further look at or will this have any kind of impact on the density regulations, which might impact open space and affordable housing?
I think that we're a lot. The density factor in terms of determining the number of lots in a subdivision is the first calculation. There are three different ways that the affordable housing could be blended into that. This is one bonus lot or site for affordable housing in 6734.4. There's also the situation hereby special permit that the commission can either modify the open space required or the proportionality factor as a result of open space being provided. And that would be a bonus affordable housing unit. And the commission may also recall, I'm just going to jump ahead to the next page here, that we did provide a provision in the VR1, VR2. This is, again, the village area that there could be a density bonus may be achieved for the provision of affordable housing units on a proportionate percentage basis. Okay, so that you could provide affordable units in the village area, and you can get a 10% increase in the total number of units if half of those units are affordable and the other half are market rate. So that it creates an incentive again for housing in the village and half. Some of those housing units would also be affordable. And the reason for for the the bonus in the village was we felt that it was walkable to the village. We had water and sewer. So we really had sort of a scenario that perhaps some additional density and and housing affordability could support the village, and it might be a an excellent location to try to include that in the development.
I I agree, and and not so much in the rural district. Yeah. So I do like number four. That if if we include the language by special permit.
Got that.
That 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 one lot that lot or site could be a credit towards the open space, but but limited to one.
Yep.
Yeah.
And for the.
I think that's an incentive. That's a good.
Yep.
Do any of the commissioners have any issue with with the the language as presented? I think Glenn has has thought this through pretty thoroughly.
I think the only thing I would like to add, Wes, is that I think the the concern was perhaps that this language could perhaps be abused in some way, shape, or form. I I I'm not sure how because the commission may buy special permits. The commission has quite a bit of control here, but if the commission wanted to put a threshold on this and say that, you know, no more than X% of the open space or no more than X acres or or some other type of scenario, no more than one unit. I deliberately created an incentive in here is that the commission can reduce the percentage of open space required and or modify the proportionality factor as a result of the provision of affordable housing units. So.
So I think it's a site site specific situation as all special permits are pertaining to the subdivision, yet unknown. But it but it gives the flexibility to be able to do that.
But Glenn, that was kind of my hesitation too. And I don't know how to frame it, but is there any way this can backfire on us?
I think since the commission pretty much has all of the discretion here in this situation that you don't have to grant a special permit. You have a special permit criteria in the regulations themselves. You have an opportunity to look at the parcel, the development as a whole, and say, you know what, this this development cannot handle another unit, so we're not going to do this, or this is going to negatively impact the neighborhood or the open space or something else in some way, shape, or form. So. So this is a little bit of a higher threshold that gives the commission the ability to review the proposal. And you may find perhaps even a preliminary discussion that an applicant chooses to have with the commission may float this idea. You may look at the development and say, you know, you need to go work this out with the conservation commission or the land trust or the Kent Affordable Housing, et cetera. And then, you know, come back with that and we'll consider it and let you know. So I, go ahead.
Well, it seems to me that there is some concern about with the special permit, the decision being challenged as being arbitrary. But so long as the decision is founded on the kinds of considerations you just articulated, then we could resist those charges. But at the same time, maybe some kind of parameters on the amount of reduction of open space in exchange for affordable housing, you know, may be advisable in the reg.
We can do that, Shelby, yeah?
A threshold would just reduce the flexibility a little bit, correct?
It would.
Yes, it would.
Yeah, I mean, I think. It may. But it's not, it's not going to, again, some of the concerns that have been expressed is that it would be unconstrained, that all of the open space could disappear for affordable housing. I don't, I don't think, I don't envision a situation where the commission would do that by special permit. Is it a possibility? I guess it could be. I think at that point in time, we're probably looking at an eight-thirty G application, statutory affordable housing application, which is a whole different animal. And really is not subject to town rules or regulations at all. So I think Shelby touched on the idea here that, you know, we could have a threshold or a limitation on this if the commission so desires.
So I just don't have an opinion on that. It's. I think being able to have maximum flexibility per application is a desirable thing. But it's
I agree with you.
Unproven commodity. I don't know what the result would be.
I agree with you, Wes.
Would the commission like to leave sixty-seven thirty-three point three in? Or remove it? Is it okay as is? Or you're not comfortable with it and the commission should remove that?
Well, Glenn, obviously you crafted this. Do you feel comfortable with it?
I feel that a special permit gives the commission quite a bit of control and discretion here. It's not a standardless decision on the part of the commission. In your regulations, you have specified the special permit criteria. And it. Get them here in front of me for a second.
Yep.
So this is section, in your current regulations, section ten-four forty. And so the criteria that you would use as part of making a special permit decision here is that whether appropriate consideration has been given to the protection, preservation, enhancement of natural, scenic, historic, or unique resources, whether it's compatible with the overall neighborhood, whether it's a suitable location for the provision of affordable housing units, where the appropriate improvements are being provided, suitable transportation conditions and adequate public utilities and services probably don't apply in this particular situation. Whether provision has been made for long-term viability and sustained maintenance of the proposed development, avoid nuisances, consistency with the plan of conservation and development, and provisions have been made to moderate or mitigate neighborhood impacts. So I think the commission could find material in there to review the application and determine whether or not they think it is an appropriate activity in this location that might result in the creation, oh, an affordable housing unit.
But to Shelby's point, is there any possible way here to make it just slightly less arbitrary or inconsistent too? I think that's really the concern and it would also be a legal consideration for us.
If the commission has other criteria that they might want to consider adding or suggest for inclusion here. Special permits have been part of Connecticut zoning law for seventy-five years at this point in time. There's quite a body of law in terms of the standards which are in your regulations today and the ability for the commission to make the appropriate findings. If you're concerned about the possibility for an overzealous proposal for affordable housing, you could put a limitation on it as part of a motion to adopt. If this concept makes you nervous or hesitant, we could delete three and stay with four. And then also the sixty-seven forty provisions related to a density bonus in the village district.
So when you say dilute three, what do you mean?
Delete. You could.
Delete, not dilute, delete.
No, no, delete. No, I was trying to think. I didn't remember using dilute, but yeah. Again, I want the commission to be comfortable with the regulation. I think we're being a little creative here that I don't know any other town in Connecticut that does this. On the other hand, in a scenario where we're getting forty or fifty percent open space.
Right.
You might have the ability to address both issues.
Right.
And again, you could put a limitation on this if the commission wanted.
Right. I mean, I have, section three makes my eyes roll. I don't. Section four, I can get my, or paragraph four, I can get my head around. But three, I can't get my head around it.
And I think the meaningful difference, I think, between the two, as we mentioned, is part of the public hearing portion of the meeting. This is the dedication of a parcel of land to Kent Affordable Housing or a similar type of nonprofit housing organization. This actually is the developer is going to be constructing the unit and it's going to be deed restricted.
Yeah.
This may be a harder set of circumstances than just this one. But either way, they're both going to require a dedicated person to propose this and carry through.
Right. But this is mostly pertaining in the RU one district.
This could be approached also in the VR one, VR two. This is, this section here kind of relates to the open space provisions. And so, yes, you do have to provide the forty percent or fifty percent open space. And this gives you the ability for a little credit to that if you set land aside for affordable housing. So if the commission is uncomfortable with three.
Well, to your point though, Glenn, I mean, if you're talking about in the two situations, you're talking about a developer doing two different things. Should we just be specific in the introduction to section three? That that's the case scenario versus the scenario in section four?
Yeah, I'm not sure the developer would choose to do both, but.
We're talking and/or situation though, aren't we?
Not the way it's set up, no.
I mean, I think we've talked about making four also a special permit. And I think you may recall in our public informational meeting on this, Justin pointed out that the town adopted an ordinance many years ago to set up a scenario, if I'm trying to remember the exact criteria. A parcel of land had never been subdivided. You're only creating one lot. And that one lot was for affordable housing, that that was exempt from subdivision regulations. And that's really what sort of started this conversation about whether or not there are other ways that we could do a somewhat similar thing. And so that's how we ended up with sort of these provisions. But again, I mean, I think if the commission is nervous or hesitant about three, so this would be thirty-seven thirty-point three. I think there's no problem or challenge if we remove that and simply rely on four by special permit. And then also section sixty-seven forty in the village does provide a density bonus.
Well, that would be my preference. I'm not sure about other commission members. Three, I just, I just don't have any, any.
I think that as, should there be an opportunity in the future to advance this? I think it was indicated Connie and others are working on groups in the region to try to address affordable housing. There may be an approach that might come back to the commission at some time in the future and the commission could consider that. So there's no, there's no need to do this today. There's no rush. It came up as an opportunity for us. And if we're not ready for it, then let's not include it in the regulation and move ahead with the other provision.
Excuse me? Connie pointed out that there is also some vagueness in paragraph four. She had her hand up, but I let her know that the public hearing, you know, she's aware that the public hearing is closed. But she just wanted to point out that, you know, there is also vagueness in paragraph four with respect to the perimeters. In exchange for the one unit, commission can credit any open space requirements. So.
I read it, and maybe it's not so, that the lot size, the acreage is credited towards the open space.
That would be my interpretation as well, Wes. I think the introduction of the special permit into this section two means that a proposal is going to come to the commission for review and consideration. And so if somebody proposes a ten-acre lot and that comes out of the open space, I think the commission would be well within its jurisdiction and its purview to say that that's excessive, that's not necessary. And the lot could be an acre or two, depending on soil types and septic and other things. So I think adding special permit in addresses that kind of situation.
So. I guess we need to move on. I would, I would modify four to be a special permit. If it gets unclear about the credit, the amount of credit. But I think it's the lot size or the site, or one lot or site. What's the distinction there, Glenn?
I think as Joe's pointed out earlier in his comments, conservation subdivision could be built in two ways. One of which is a subdivision with a creation of a lot. And the second of which could be a common interest community where a site would be dedicated. I think it's much more likely to be a lot. But wanted to provide some flexibility in here again for the commission and the applicant, the developer, et cetera, to address this issue.
The entire site, the entire site is then credited towards the open space. And I don't think that's our intent.
Yeah, okay. So we could say or one house site.
Or one house site, correct. I mean, if it's, if it's a subdivision devoted towards affordable housing, it's going to be exempt from zoning anyway.
Yeah, I think the statutes do not allow the commission to impose open space set-aside requirements if there are twenty percent of the units in the subdivision are affordable housing units. I don't, I don't see a situation there where that's likely to happen. So I think, again, if I understand the commission's feedback so far, the items on the table here for consideration are to remove sixty-seven thirty-point three, leave in sixty-seven thirty-point four with two modifications. One of which is make it by special permit. And secondly, to clarify, this language is or site to one house, one lot or one house site.
Right, right.
Yep.
I like it. I would be uncomfortable with three without a threshold. So if we just get rid of it, it just reduces the variable that we're uncomfortable with.
Great. So Daryl's had a motion?
Yes, it is, sir. I make that motion.
Okay.
I just, before we go any further, I just, and again, I don't know how to frame this, but I want to be able to have as much ammunition, if you will, as we need if we come up against a greedy developer.
Any developer, well, with the elimination of three.
Doesn't.
I don't think we're going to have a greedy developer who's going to dedicate land for an affordable unit.
Speak towards a greedy developer.
So the issue is the developer gets nothing out of this by setting the land aside to a nonprofit housing organization. They do not get the additional unit. There is no bonus in here for them. It's a enhancement, if you will, in terms of helping the Kent Affordable Housing on their mission. It doesn't, doesn't cost them anything, doesn't hurt them anything.
Then with Daryl's motion on the table, can I second?
Yes, please.
Second the motion.
Okay. So now we can discuss. We've got a motion as second. Is there any further discussion on this?
Glenn, just to clarify, the previous statement about the steep slopes too, that was also changed to twenty-five percent in the.
Yeah, thank you, Sarah. I'm tracking three things, I believe, which has been the commission's guidance here. I think it's in Daryl's motion. The first one is the proportionality factor. This number changes from fifteen percent to twenty-five percent. That's the same parallelism we spoke about on the prior, on the subdivision regulations. That's part one. Part two is to delete sixty-seven thirty-point three. And then the third part of the motion is on number four, to make this by special permit and to clarify that this is one house site.
I'll confirm that that is in fact my motion. Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you.
Shelby? Shelby, did you second that before?
I think it was Sarah.
Sarah, Sarah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I continue with my seconding of it.
All right. So is there any discussion on that?
If the commission is likely to move ahead here, Wes, I think, Ty, we're looking at an effective date of February ten again.
That's correct. Yes, please.
Thank you.
So Daryl, that would be inserted?
Wouldn't have it any other way.
Okay.
Okay, ice fisherman. There you go.
And second?
And second that?
Yeah. Terrific. All right. So let's call the all in favor of modifying item two to twenty-five percent, deleting paragraph three and modifying paragraph four to a special permit. Deleting paragraph three and modifying paragraph four to a special permit. And the clarification of one. Site or lot or house site. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Okay, Shelby, is that your hand? All right, motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Glenn, I think you were.
Still got some more work to do with Ty, but it's been a pleasure working with all of you on all of these changes to the regulations we accomplished over the past year or so. So thank you for hanging in there on on the reg changes. We covered a lot of ground. I think we made some good changes to the regulations, so thank you.
Yeah, I I I agree with that. All right, so I think that concludes our business. Somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'm going to adjourn.
Thank you, Alice. Oh, somebody's got to second that.
I'm happy to second that.
All right. All right. Everybody's in favor, so thank you all and we'll see you tomorrow night.
Thank you, everybody.